Russell, if you can do roll call, please.
Mayor McKay.
Here.
Vice Mayor Schroder.
Here.
Councilmember Amundson.
Here.
Councilmember Hartman.
Here.
And Councilmember Jablonski.
Here.
Would you please stand for the pledge, or Russell, if you'd lead us, I appreciate it.
Certainly, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, Andy, I'm gonna pass over to you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I do have a statement I want to read into the record. Pursuant to Florida statute, Chapter 200.065, Section 2, Paragraph E1, the first item to be discussed tonight is the percentage increase, if any, in millage over the world back rate and why. For fiscal year 2020-2021, the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, is considering a levy of 4.2500 mils, which is lower than the world back rate of 4.4558 mils by minus 4.62%. Actually, property owners with no change in their net taxable value will receive a real cash reduction of 8.73% in their town of Southwest Ranches portion of the tax bill due to the reduction of the millage rate from 4.6564 mils to 4.2500 mils. Although the town does have annual increases primarily from higher contractual costs pertaining to the fourth year of a five-year public safety services contract for both police and fire rescue, these expenses are able to be strategically offset to enable the town to lower the millage rate from the prior fiscal year via the following. Number one, our transportation surface drainage ongoing rehabilitation project, otherwise known as TIS Door, is eligible for mobility enhancement program, the transportation surtax awards. Therefore, it does not require funding via millage for the upcoming fiscal year. Two, current economic environment due to the COVID-19 pandemic supports a reduced millage. Three, growth in net new taxable value of almost 32 million, representing over 33% of the 6.58% in total townwide growth, which is a new record for Southwest Ranches. Four, lower debt interest expense due to FEMA and Department of Emergency Management reimbursement for both Hurricanes Irma and Dorian allowing for full payoff of our outstanding emergency line of credit. Five, a newly adopted fire assessment methodology study reduced the locable cost impact to the general fund. Six, quality of life and level of service improvements. Millage-funded program modifications are less in number and dollar scope. Seven, capital improvement projects, millage-funded CIPs are also less in number and dollar scope. Finally, this budget provides for the funding of some program modifications, including quality of life and service level improvements, public safety, parks, recreation, and open space, and other transportation capital improvements. After numerous advisory board meetings, council discussions, and a budget workshop, the revised budget totals $18,306,738. This includes a general fund budget totaling $13,315,023, just over half of which provides for police, fire protection, and rescue services. A capital projects funds budget totaling $240,039 to not just maintain facilities but also improve our public safety as well as parks, recreation, and open space infrastructure. Special revenue funds budget comprising of the transportation fund totaling $1,499,668 to maintain as well as improve streets, roadways, and drainage, and a volunteer fire fund totaling $233,768. A debt service fund budget totaling $1,304,655, which provides for one year of principal and interest payments on the existing loans as well as a provision for future debt service. And finally, an enterprise fund comprised of the solid waste, bulk waste, and recycling utilities budget totaling $1,713,585. The millage rate and budget required two public hearings. The initial hearing was held on Monday, September 14th, 2020 at 6:00 PM. The second hearing and adoption was scheduled for last Thursday, September 24th, and we're asking you tonight to reaffirm the decision and the vote that you made last Thursday. And before I turn it over to the next item, Mayor, I know there's just something else I want to address. First of all, we recognize that many members of our agricultural community are on tonight's meeting. We know that their concerns regarding the fire assessment have not been addressed to their satisfaction. We've received numerous emails and letters which have been shared with our consultants' legal counsel, and all that information is currently under review. Tonight, we're only here to address millage and the budget. And I will tell you that after you adopt the budget tonight, it can certainly be modified by a majority of the council after adoption going forward. And we will continue to work on the fire assessment review and present our findings to the council in a timely manner. So I just wanted to put that on the record for a lot of people who are listening at home to tonight's meeting. And other than that, Mayor, I'd like to turn it over to Russell to read the first resolution.
Okay.
Keith, help me out here. Are we doing a motion first to reconsider?
Yes, that's, I want to make sure everyone understood procedurally where we're at. This item was fully debated already, spoken to by the public, and voted upon by the council. Prior to the vote, I advised the council that the Sun and Sentinel inadvertently advertised the items improperly. The Florida statute states that when the item is advertised, that the two items actually need to be side by side on the paper in the legal ad. Unfortunately, the Sentinel put one on one page and one on another page. While the state of Florida told us that that was acceptable, they also told us that they would have to give us a minor written infraction saying that we didn't conform with the requirements of the Florida statute as they are written. In order to avoid the minor infraction, we agreed with the state and others that we would go ahead, have the hearing when advertised, and then have it reheard a few days later after the new ad was run by the Sentinel. That's why we're here tonight. So as a result of that, the items already been passed and adopted. We'd need a motion for reconsideration to bring both items back upon the table for then goes back to the council for reconsideration.
I make a motion.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, Russell, please read the resolution in.
So, so Russell, by purposes of the record, the motion was for reconsideration of both items. So if you could breathe, please read both items back into the record, and then it can go back to the council for deliberation.
Keith, just procedurally, just correct, don't we have to take a vote on the reconsideration first?
Yes.
Okay, so let me do the roll first then, correct?
Go ahead.
All right. Councilmember Amundson. Councilmember Amundson?
He's gonna unmute first.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hartman.
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder.
Yes.
Mayor McKay.
Yes.
Okay, so the motion to reconsider these two items passes 5-0, and then I will read the resolution into the record. Number five is a resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving and adopting the final millage rate for taxation of real and personal property lying within the boundaries of the town of Southwest Ranches for the 2020-2021 fiscal year commencing October 1st, 2020, and ending September 30th, 2021, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Are you reading both of them, or is there one?
No, you're reading both.
I'll read the ordinance as well. The ordinance on second reading is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving the budget of the town of Southwest Ranches for fiscal year 2020 through 2021, commencing October 1st, 2020, and ending September 30th, 2021, providing for a budget basis, providing for expenditure of funds, providing for carryover of funds, providing for notice, providing for severability, providing for conflict, and providing for an effective date.
Keith, if I may, is it proper to make a motion for both at once, or we need to do them?
No, we need one at a time, one at a time, please.
You would need one at a time, or do the, Marty, which one are you doing first?
Millage, millage first, please, counselor.
So if you could do a motion on the millage, we will reopen it up to the public. Everything stated previously is incorporated into the record. It would just be if anyone had any new comments to make.
I make, I make the motion till we approve the millage.
Second.
Okay. Let's, who's got their hand raised as far as commenting on this?
Thank you, Mayor. It's back to you.
Yep. I'm asking Russell as far as who's got their hand raised.
At this, at this point, no one has their hands raised to speak regarding the millage. Well, you stand corrected. I do see a couple of people raising their hands now, so let me call on the first speaker, which would be, looks like Steve Brightcruz. Mr. Brightcruz, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you just fine. You have two minutes, sir.
Great, thank you. This, the fire fee is tied to the millage because the, the growth in the, in the fire fee is what allows the millage to go down to the rate it is. We, you know, given the situation that we're in, I believe that the council can take action immediately to provide relief. I would propose that you consider directing the town administrator to waive these fees, these fire fees that are, you know, out of, they're just out of the bounds of what's reasonable. And so I would urge you to direct the town administrator to waive those fees for this one year only, and then reconvene the fire assessment committee so that they can correct the issue and make a proposal for next year so that this does not occur next year. And, and I would also say that we have to be very careful that the proposal that the committee makes is also the proposal that goes to council. And I think if we do all three of those items, we will be able to relieve the immediate issue, that's at hand, and we will be able to resolve going forward the issue in future years. Thank you for considering that.
Thank you, Mr. Brightcruz. Okay, the next speaker, Mayor, is David Kozinski. Mr. Kozinski, can you hear me?
Certainly.
All right, you have two minutes, sir.
David Kozinski, 6411 Hollity Trail. When the fire committee reviewed and made their determination, it was my understanding that it was going to be one fire fee equal across all the properties. And I'm still holding that that should be the position of the council. Hitting these ag barns with this very excessive and onerous fee is, without saying more, it's anti-ag. You're, you're throwing out the ag. And so I believe that the council should act on this and make it equal across the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kozinski.
Done.
All right, and the next speaker, Mayor, is Fred Cox. Mr. Cox, can you hear us?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you have two minutes, sir.
Thank you, sir. First of all, with all due respect to Mr. Burns, we have busted our ass to get the letters, comments to the council. If you weren't gonna listen to them, the phone and email works both ways. Jim Berry filed a complaint with Marty Sherwood on August 27th, Linda Flack just a few days after that, and Barb Parga a few days after that. Y'all have had a month to discuss this. The letters from the Florida Department of Agriculture, the Florida Nursery Growers, and Landscaping Association, the Florida Farm Bureau Federation, they don't fall off of trees. This has been a lot of work. We've done our work. Jim, Linda, Todd, Barb, they've had sleepless nights. They've had restless days. They've got thousands of dollars holding their head. We have a $16 million budget. It's so big that Marty Sherwood puts $3 million on a miscellaneous, which is foreign to the Maclav County teachers. But we need to resolve this. This is a few thousand dollars. It's rounding errors as far as the town is concerned. And, and how did we get into this? We've asked, we pleaded, we worked on a study, we've made comments. Our phone calls weren't returned, our emails weren't returned. We've been more than fair. All we're asking from five council people, Mr. Burns, Mr. Sherwood, is to be fair to us. This, this, this absurd fire fee, $5,000 or $4,400 on a cost $14,000. That's not reasonable. Y'all passed an ordinance that a noise ordinance is determined by a reasonable person. Well, let's find that reasonable person and put him in charge of fire fees, please. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Cox, thank you. The next speaker, Mayor, is Mary Ann Allen. Ms. Allen, can you hear me? Ms. Allen, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
I can hear you just fine, yes. You have two minutes.
It's a challenge when you're my age and it's all this technology. My comment is, you know, I just found out about this. I don't think these things are well advertised to get enough public comment at these meetings, and I don't like the fact that everybody is now on Zoom meetings, which a lot of the older residents can't join and give their input. I believe the death rate has dropped dramatically. There are no sick people. I was in the hospital over the weekend. It was very empty. I was having surgery. And I think a lot of people are using the excuse of COVID not to have public come back and really address the issue in front of you face to face, which is what this deserves. Because what you're doing is anti-ag, anti-farm, anti-horse ranch, and people are seeing it. We're mad. We're mad as hell, and we want to tell you about it. Doing this over Zoom is really inappropriate. And when are you going to open the town council? The numbers have dropped dramatically. Nobody's getting, you know the death rate is less than 10,000 when you take out all the other factors? So I really think it's about time the public is allowed back. The two-minute limit is ridiculous. We always had five minutes to speak our minds. It's like you're muzzling us with the time we're allowed to speak. You're muzzling us with our mouths, and you're muzzling us by not allowing us to come to the town council. Open it up again and stop persecuting horse owners, barns, agricultural people. We get it, and we're mad as hell, okay? Please don't let us bring pitchforks to the next town meeting because we all have some. Thank you, guys. Please listen to us.
All right, Mayor, the next speaker is James Berry. Mr. Berry, can you hear us? Mr. Berry, can you hear us?
Yes, good to hear you.
We can hear you. Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead, sir. You have two minutes.
All right, real quick, my barn's one of the questions that's being hit. I'm gonna just say this. Southwest Ranches, their logo is to preserve the rural lifestyle. What part of rural lifestyle does not have horse barns and agriculture? If you overtax and you unfairly tax this way of life, you would destroy what you claim this town stands for. Listen, I don't care if you guys come up with a fee per building or whatever. I'm not a, I, I'm a taxpayer and, and I'm more than, I love this town. I'm more than willing to pay my fair share. But this is not fair. And I know there's, the mega mansions are coming to town, and God bless America and those people who want to live like that. I'm not here to attack them. But I want to live the rest of my life out here. So let me just finish my days here in the way that I came here. And then you can build the mega mansions on top of my property. But not yet. So give us some time to adapt. Please reconsider this in your budget, and we'll bring the hearings out. But I need to know at the end of this meeting if I have to cough up $5,000 for this barn because I gotta figure out where to get that $5,000. Because I paid my taxes. And I also vote. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Okay, the next speaker, Mayor, is Kathy Cox. Ms. Cox?
Uh, can you hear me?
Yeah, you got background noise. Gotta turn a computer or something off. Something's making feedback.
Okay, are we better now? There we go. Is that good?
Better, yes. We're better. Well, you're muted again.
Okay, here we go. I think we're done, right? Okay. Sorry, I'm still trying to figure this out. During a conversation the other day, I overheard someone say, "Well, agriculture people should pay something." There seems to be a misconception around town that because one has an agricultural exemption on their property, that they're exempt from taxes. We all know that is absolutely not true. Those of us who have agricultural exemptions, and it really should be called an agricultural designation, not an exemption, because we are not exempt from paying taxes. I pay full freight, ad valorem taxes on my barn, house, and most of my land, just like everybody else in town who has no agricultural designation. I pay a lesser rate of tax on the agricultural part of my land, and only my land, because horses, cows, chickens, plants, and empty land don't go to schools, don't go to the hospital, don't go to the library, don't play baseball in the parks, or call the police or fire departments. Houses, horses, cows, and chickens, and plants don't use the same services that us people demand. And so they live on, well, the land they live on pays a lesser tax rate. We're already paying a fire assessment like everyone else in town, $629 per parcel, which is what the fire board decided that we should do. What we're objecting to is paying an additional fire assessment fee for our outbuildings, garages, and storage sheds, and to have to pay a fee that is the same as Lowe's and what Lowe's and Publix pays. And it's not equitably assessed. You at Town Hall just picked out some people that get to pay, and it's not fair. So I'm really tired of the, the, the thing about being timely. Nobody ever does anything timely here. And I think it's about time the five of you, the five council members, called Mr. Andy to task and tell him to get things done on time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Okay, Mayor, the next speaker is Christine Johnson. Ms. Johnson, are you there? Can you hear us?
I am here, thank you. My name is Christine Johnson. I reside at 17960 Southwest 66th Street. I've owned my property since 2002. I have an agriculture barn. I was affected by the assessment last year that was changed. I'm a lawyer. I find it very disturbing that the town is relying on Statute 170.01, Section 4, in the taxing of the agricultural buildings. If you read the statute, and anyone reads the statute, subsection 4 was not designed as a punitive measure to tax agricultural structures. In fact, it was designed to protect them. And if you read the statute and what happened prior to that, and why it wasn't acted, it has nothing to do with what this town has imposed by using that statute as a way to tax agriculture. If you read the statute, the statute actually, the first part has to do with special assessments and how they're actually assessed for properties. For instance, I'll give you an example of the cases. For, for example, they have a case where they were building roads, and they said, "Who's gonna benefit from the road? These people are, we're going to tax them accordingly." And that's how they're supposed to be taxed. So if we're gonna tax ad valorem or belorum taxes, it should not be using Statute 170. You need to review it. It's not what it says. It's misapplied. And we're gonna end up in more lawsuits like we did with Diamond Eye, and we're gonna end up spending more money on legal fees on something that should not even be an issue with this town. If you're gonna tax, tax it properly. If there's an assessment, it has to be properly levied between the properties at the amount of the benefit of that particular assessment. That's the way the statute reads. I did send a letter to the councilman and to the mayor today. Mr. Hartman did get back to me, thank you. And I'm assuming nobody, maybe you didn't have a chance to read it. It was rather lengthy. But I appreciate any of the comments that I could receive from the mayor, the council members, to address the statute properly and not use it as a punitive measure to tax agricultural structures. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Mayor, the next speaker is Lori Parrish. Ms. Parrish, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You have two minutes. Go ahead.
Okay, I was, when I got the email from Russell today that I had to sign up for the meeting, I had to submit my question to him, which I was a bit taken back. But I submitted the question. It was the question I asked last meeting about why would Mr. Berry's barn, which is a value of $14,000 to $19,000, I don't remember, receive a $4,400 fire assessment fee when the property right next door to Town Hall on the east side receives $6, I mean, $629 assessment? And what I don't understand is why would that value of that building, which has a much greater value than Mr. Berry's barn, or Ms. Flack's barn, or Ms. Johnson's barn, why would that building, which is assessed well over the $10,000 threshold, receive $629.14? In addition to that, if the first $10,000 are exempt by statute, then why isn't it that all of these other folks would be exempted on that first $10,000, and you would just tax them above that? So that's the same question I asked last week. Mr. Sherwood told me he would get back if I gave him the parcel number. I gave the parcel number during the meeting, and I've yet to receive a response from anyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parrish. Okay, Mayor, the next speaker is Fred Siegel. Mr. Siegel, can you hear us?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you, Mr. Siegel. Go ahead, proceed. You have two minutes.
Okay, thank you. I sent my question into you, but basically, what I wanted to ask was, based on 170.01 that you're basing this on, it states in there that such special assessment must be based solely on the special benefits accruing to that portion of the land consisting of the residential dwelling and curtilage and qualifying non-residential farm building. So a agricultural structure really does not have as much fire exposure as a residential structure. Now, I'm not saying people with ag buildings should not pay a fire assessment fee, but it should be a reasonable fee, and it should not be exceeding the amount of a residential dwelling unit. Why should a 40,000 square foot or 10,000 square foot or whatever size residential unit only pay 600 and some odd dollars, and an agricultural building pay over 4,000? That was not the intent of the legislature when they passed this section of the statutes. And you really need to go back and look at it, unless you want to look at ending up in court again, which I'm afraid is gonna happen. But you need to be addressing that assessment based on the benefits that are gonna be accrued to those ag buildings.
Thank you, Mr. Siegel. Okay, Mayor, I believe the final speaker is Todd Flack. Mr. Flack, can you hear us?
It's Linda Flack.
Okay, Ms. Flack.
How are you doing?
Okay, thank you. You have two minutes.
I know that the council members all received my letters, and my question is, is why does this have to wait? How long did it take for you to come to these decisions about the fire assessments to begin with? And how did you come to decide on who pays what? Because none of them are the same. So that's one question. And the second question is, is when I heard Steve Brightcruz speak about waiving it, you know, that would be an excellent suggestion since right now we're all facing to pay a lot of money, and none of you are. So it's not time of the essence for you, but it is for us. So I'm concerned about that. And the second thing is, is this is not the first time this has happened to us, to me. This is certainly not going to end here unless we do something about it. And hearing everybody pleading to you, what more can we do? I don't know what else we can possibly do. So we look to you to make the right decisions for our neighbors. You know, we're all neighbors. We're not You know, we're all neighbors, we're not trying to hurt anybody. So we look to you to resolve this and at least come up with a better solution tonight rather than to put it off any longer. At least make some kind of suggestion for the few of us that are being affected right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Flack. Okay, Mayor, we do have one additional speaker that has raised his hand, Jim Albritton. Mr. Albritton, can you hear us?
Yes, sir, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you fine, you have two minutes, sir.
Yes, Council, the fire board, can we bring that back and invite these people that are questioning the fire tax fees to come and sit in and see if we can't come to some type of a resolution for this? And, and I, I know that the budget needs to get passed, and it'll cost the town a lot of money if it's not. But is there some way that we could get together, Zoom meeting? Maybe Marty could set something up to where these people could be involved also and, and come up with a solution? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Albritton. Okay, Mayor, seeing no further speakers.
Okay, let me jump in here a second. You know, we feel for the residents that are impacted. And I'd like Andy and Marty to come back to us with a proposal, proposed solution, no later than the second meeting in October, if that's okay with the rest of my colleagues.
Absolutely.
Sure.
Something we need to fix very quickly and expeditiously. But first, we need to know what the scope of it is, and that's where we need Marty's and Andy's analysis.
So if you all could get on that, Andy, Marty, and, uh, and get back, because be by the second meeting in October, so we can get this resolved, I'd be greatly appreciated.
Yes, Mary. Well, Marty and I'll get on it.
You're muted, Dee, you're muted.
I agree, Andy, I think we need to bring this back as soon as possible so that we can resolve this issue.
Okay, so we're all on board on that?
Yes, I, I am, I know I've received everything from, from a lot of people. And I think I agree wholeheartedly that sooner rather than later, and I don't think that that is something that anyone disagrees with.
No, we don't, I think we're all on the same page here.
Right, so whatever we have to do to put that on the table and go with it, then I'm in agreement.
All right, so residents, I hope you hear us, we're gonna get, we're gonna be on it and
Yeah, because some of the emails
finalize and fix.
Some of the emails that are coming in are not very nice, and
rightfully so, I get it.
If we can fix this quickly, we could probably stop that.
I would like to say to Mary Ann, if she's still listening, I mean, bless your heart, Mary Ann, some of us that are older, these Zoom meetings are annoying for sure. But I think even the younger ones hate them. So I'm with you, as soon as we can get back together. But remember, we're under the Broward County Mayor's discretion, and they're not letting us get back, though.
Governors in Liv County, exactly.
Yeah, the governor, yeah, the governor said, go for it, you know, but unfortunately, he isn't the mayor of the, of, of those counties, so, but anyway, Mary Ann, thanks for your comment.
Andy, you good, or you want to say something else?
No, I, I, it's, the, the will of the council and the, and the concerns of the public are very, very clear. And we'll get the information back from our consultant's attorney once she finishes that, but Marty and I'll go through that and, and certainly report back to you all.
All right.
Can I just jump in for a second?
Go ahead, sure.
Before we move forward. Marty, Lori had said that she brought up a question last week, and it didn't get answered. Then she said she sent you an email asking the question, and she asked it again tonight. Can you answer her question?
Uh, no, not as of yet. We, we, we have the consultant, the attorney handling the issue. We want to be uniform and consistent, so that's not ready to respond yet.
Okay, so when you get it, you'll be sure to address it specifically with her?
Yes, I will, council member.
Thank you.
Okay. Let me call the question, please.
Councilmember Amundson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski? Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Okay, the motion to approve the final millage is approved. Item six, the budget ordinance.
Need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay.
Thank you, Russell, please read it in, or we read that in.
We read that.
So we got the motion, and
That's public comment.
Public comment, and back to council, yes, sir.
Any hands raised, Russell?
I don't see any, Mayor.
Give it a minute.
There's no hands up, Mayor.
All right.
We just, just
That was new.
No, it was Mary Ann Allen, but it looks like she took it back now.
Okay. All right, back to us. Are you calling the question, or anybody has any comments? All right, call the question.
Councilmember Amundson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder? Vice Mayor Schroder, you're muted.
Yes.
Thank you. And Mayor McKay?
Yes.
The motion to approve the budget ordinance is approved, five to zero.
Okay, thank you, Russell. There is one slide, yes, Russell, the just the display for public record is our adopted budget in brief that was ratified tonight. And this is available on the website for everyone to view. Two-sided, continues, consisting from year to year for visual purposes. I want to thank you all for a five oh, uniform vote, and we're completed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you, everybody, stay safe and go watch the debate.
Gary.
Yes. Motion to adjourn.
May it everybody.
All right, thank you, appreciate it, stay safe.
All right.